I did what?
Getting ready to go, folks.
I never noticed. That's why I'm short.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, August 28, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to introduce everyone at the table this evening. To my far left, I have Rebecca Oldham, Town Administrator, Selectwoman Kathy Castranellis. Jason Naves is not going to make it tonight. Mac Parento, Selectman, Edward Watson, Selectman. Tonight, we have our guests from the Planning Board. We have Brad Legals, far right. We have Chris Goodwin. And we have Mr. McNulty. First name?
Dennis.
Dennis McNulty. I'm Daniel McDonald, Chairman for the evening. Please join us in saying the Pledge of the Allegiance.
John's there, too.
Oh. I didn't see John, I'm sorry. John, what's your last name, John?
Stokes.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First up, we have a public comment. Mike Dempsey has something this evening.
Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptack Road. I'm just here to remind us about the first opportunity that we've got for our Household Hazardous Waste Day here in 2023. And it's going to be on Saturday, September 9, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. At the Newburyport Department of Public Services at 16A Perry Way in Newburyport. So I realize that's Groveland Day, too, so you need to get there early and get rid of your waste before you come to Groveland Day. So one of the things that my wife wanted me to remind everybody is, you know, everybody's got hazardous waste probably hiding in your basement or garage. Things like mercury-containing items like compact fluorescent bulbs, thermostats. Maybe you've got some old lithium batteries from a cellphone. Or the, my least favorite thing is oil paint and oil thinner. I can't stand that stuff because you get the can half-full and you don't know what to do with it. And then also things like herbicides, pesticides, maybe some garden chemicals, pool chemicals. And another least favorite thing of mine is propane tank. And maybe things like drain cleaners, oil from changing your car oil when you used to do that yourself, antifreeze. All those things that probably everyone in Groveland has at least one or two of those things in their home. So here's an opportunity to get rid of it. So what you need to do is pack it up, bring it to Newburyport that day. The cost is minimal. There's more details on the website, but the most you're going to pay is about $60 for up to 25 gallons. And they're pretty liberal on how they come up with that number. Also, just a note, latex paint is not included. A couple of other things that aren't included are medical waste, obviously, smoke detectors, and tires. A tip on latex paint, you know, you have to separate the oil base and the latex. Latex paint, you can have it dry out, you put it in the sun and it dries out, then you can throw it in the normal trash. Or you can buy some chemical like at Obashawn's that you mix this powder with the latex paint and then it's, you can throw it in the trash. So remember that date, September 9, Saturday, 8:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m. in Newburyport. And they only accept cash or check and also bring proof of your Groveland residence with you because they're not just letting just anybody in there. Thank you.
And it will be on the town website, it will be posted later.
Mike, how about letting people know whereabouts in Newburyport it is?
It is 16 Perry Way, it's in the industrial section.
16 Perry Way?
Yeah, 16A Perry Way.
16A Perry Way?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right. Next up, we have approval of a one-day liquor license for Groveland Day. Rockport Brewing Company for the 5th Annual Groveland Day 5K Race on September 8, 2023, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Is there a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second, and any discussion? Kathy? All right, all those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Approval of a one-day liquor license for Sandy Wise on behalf of the Pentucket High School class of 73 and 71 for a private event on September 23, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve, everything looks to be in order.
I'll second.
Where's it being held?
Yeah, where is that?
Oh, at VZ.
At VZ. All right, that was a, that was a motion, who was the motion? Who had the motion?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Kathy, all those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Resignation of Molly Lees as the Administrative Assistant in the Water and Sewer Department effective August 24, 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the resignation of Molly Lees as the Administrative Assistant in the Water and Sewer Department effective August 24, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Any discussion? No, all those in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank Ms. Lees for her service, as always, and
Absolutely.
wish her well in future. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's that?
Those in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent. Acceptance of land donation parcel 13-014A from Stephen DePietro. Two-acre parcel located along Seven Star Road. This is an agenda item by Mike Dempsey, the Conservation Commission Chair. Mike?
Good evening again. Mike Dempsey of the Conservation Commission. So back in somewhere around 2017, the commission was offered this parcel 13014A. It's a small, two-acre little triangle on Seven Star Road. So the commission was willing to accept it. And at the time, unfortunately, an attorney who was on the commission didn't quite understand what was going on. And he drew up the deed for us, which was fine. But he then got the donator to sign it and brought it to the registry. And they registered it, which is a mistake because both you and the commission have to take an official vote and sign a form that goes along with any deed for, I mean, for donated land at the registry. So that didn't happen. It took a while before that finally got figured out what was wrong with this deed floating out there. And then the pandemic happened. And so here we are, over five years later, trying to fix this problem. So what I need tonight is a vote from the Selectmen and a signature by the Chair that you are willing to accept this donation to fix all of the unfortunate circumstances that happened on this donation. So just some information about the parcel. As I said, it's a two-acre parcel. Its annual property tax is about $26. And it's located between two conservation, two existing conservation parcels, one on each side of Seven Star Road. So it fits in with our criteria for accepting donations. And it also is listed on the action plan for the Groveland 2020 Open Space and Recreation Plan. So the commission believes that it fits all the criteria that we would normally use to accept a donation. So I ask that tonight you vote to accept it and sign that form.
Is it wetlands or?
Yes.
Turtle habitat?
It's, no, I don't think so, but it's, it's all wet.
It's not buildable.
No.
Dan?
Is there a motion? Oh, yeah, well, let's get a motion going.
And I got a question for Mike.
Sure.
Mike, where does 14A end and 14 start? Doesn't show it on the map.
There, there's, that 14A, it's like a triangle, see how it's like a triangle there? And there's a, there's a line that goes up there. I don't know why that, what that line indicates other than the property line. Oh, I think that that's, that was a non-colored version of the printout. Unfortunately, you have the black and white version there, but it's that triangular piece.
Okay.
You'll say, you'll say, Ed?
I'll say.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept this parcel 13-014A from Stephen DePietro. And it's a two-acre parcel.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Thanks, Stephen. Official creation of Trash and Recycling Committee with established charge and scope. Is this something you were working on, Kathy?
Guess so.
I guess so.
Thought I was already made.
I think it's your brainchild, right?
I was already made.
Don't you want credit?
Yes. So our town administrator was kind enough to draft a scope or purpose for this committee. A little more formally, it's in the docket, it's in the packet, I'll read out loud. The committee will consist of five voting members, including a designee from the Board of Selectmen, a designee from the Board of Health, a designee from the Finance Board, and two residents at large. The committee will also have three ex-officio non-voting members, including the Board of Health Administrative Assistant or Health Agent, Highway Superintendent, and Town Administrator. Its mission, the Trash and Recycling Committee's mission, is to provide the town with convenient and cost-effective waste reduction and recycling programs and to promote environmentally, environmental sustainability and preservation. The committee will focus on practices that reduce waste through recycling, composting, and education. Our charge, long-term charge, the committee acts in an advisory and consulting capacity to the Board of Selectmen relative to any and all matters concerning solid waste management to identify ways of increasing recycling and waste reduction and serve as a resource for the general education of the public with respect to matters concerning solid waste management, solid waste reduction, and recycling. Short-term charge, 2023 to 2024. Okay. Were being established to assist the town in procuring a new collection contract and to consider possible enhancements and recycling efforts. It shall be the responsibility of the committee to work with the town administrator in developing a program for solid waste and recycling collection services beyond 2026. In connection with this responsibility, it is, it is expected that the committee shall complete the following tasks. One, become familiar with the regional market for solid waste collection and recyclables products. Two, comprehend state regulation of solid waste and operational issues in Groveland as it relates to the collection of solid waste and recyclables. Three, serve as a conduit to listen and receive public input. Four, assist the town administrator in drafting a competitive request for proposals to procure collection services and/or to market recyclable products. And five, assist the town administrator in public education efforts on the town system of solid waste collection and recycling. So pretty comprehensive.
Right. And just Rebecca and I spoke about this, they wouldn't have any direct contact with vendors in any sort of fashion in terms of contract negotiations.
No, only Rebecca, our town administrator, would be the spokesperson.
With the board.
And through the board voting for Rebecca to
Yes.
to do such, yes.
Rebecca would be the voice on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So do you want to vote to accept this?
Like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to accept the creation of the Trash and Recycling Committee as described in the document provided by our town administrator, which I just read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll second it.
You'll second it? Ed got the second. Any discussion? Sounds good, sounds like a start and see how it goes?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, all those in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
Now what?
That's it?
Okay.
We good?
Yeah, I think we're good on that.
Next up, we have a presentation of the Comprehensive Master Plan Progress Report and joint presentation to the, to the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. Emily Innis of Innis Associates and Michelle Wang of Form One Place. I think they're going to present this. Welcome, Planning Board, and your name is?
My name is Emily Innis from Innis Associates. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I will share my screen.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Excellent.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. It is a pleasure for both myself and Michael Wang of Form and Place to be here. We are the consultants for the comprehensive planning process. We appreciate members of the Board of Selectmen and members of the Planning Board the chance to present the short update to you. We're going to talk a little bit about the vision and the goals. Michael will kick us off on that, so really the high-level portions of the plan. Then I'm going to come back and talk a little bit about the implementation plan, what that means, and the key roles that both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen have in its approval and implementation. And then finally, we're going to talk a little bit about the public comment period for the current draft, what that is, how the members of the public can participate, and when it ends. So with that, I am going to turn this over to Michael.
Thank you, Emily. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Members, thank you. Again, I'm Michael Wang with Form and Place, architecture and planning firm based in Newton, Massachusetts. And as Emily said, we've, we've had a pleasure working with the community for the past year and a half or so, helping to pull together the plan. And I'm going to walk you through three quick slides here just to give you an overview of the visioning process and some of the goals that were derived from that. Essentially, as I think most of you know, there was a draft, a master plan produced in 2001, which put forward a vision. When we did our initial survey of the larger community, over 70% of people responded favorably that the vision that had been set forth at that time, over 20 years ago, they either agreed or strongly agreed that the components of that were largely still relevant to today. We subsequently sort of refined that by reviewing other more recent plans, like the Open Space and Recreation Plan, Complete Streets, Housing Production Plan, and some studies that were done around Elm Square. And combined with input from the Steering Committee and staff, as well as a series of workshops that we did back in May of 2022, hard to believe that was a year and a half ago, and a presence at Groveland Day, and a series of surveys, we kind of refined that vision. The vision, as you see on the screen, you know, largely touches on, I'm going to mention four specific things, about sort of the identity of the town in general as a, quote, pleasant place to live. That's a theme that's been carried forward for the 20 years. A real focus on open space and recreation, which we took a step further, thinking about the connectivity between all the elements that exist in the town. A focus on a preservation of resources, and that's both natural resources like Aquifer, as well as historic resources. And, and in general, just sort of trying to find a balance between, among the community's needs relative to both development and preservation. So if you look at this image here, which is sort of an overview diagram of the town, this, I can talk briefly about the organization of the plan. Comprehensive plans in general contain a series of elements, including land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, open space and recreation, service and facilities, and transportation. And these are focuses that are consistently done through all comprehensive plans. What we decided to do was look at it through a lens, a sort of a geographic lens. And we focused, we identified three key nodes in the town, which you see highlighted in orange on the screen there. One is the Elm Square area, which expanded to include the pines. The other started off as the 150 Center Street site and then grew to include the Washington Street corridor and down to VC Memorial Park. And the third node was essentially the gateway on Route 97 as you enter the town from Georgetown, sort of down to the Bagnell intersection at center where the Community Trail intersects. So those ended up being our focal points. And ultimately, all the things that we, that helped us to, oops, seems like it went forward too, excuse me. This helped to generate a series of goals. And each of those three nodes that I mentioned sort of encompass a number of the, the elements of comprehensive planning. So Elm Square, for example, speaks to ideas about gateway, identity of the town. It has economic development components to it, as well as historical aspects. And we felt like the connectivity between Elm Square and the river, for example, is something we really wanted to focus on. And that involved connecting to the Community Trail Network as well as the pines. And so each of these goals, we go into in a, in a section of the comprehensive plan and talk about in detail. The second goal was talking about the quality of, I guess I refer to it as the South Groveland, if you will, which is the old factory village site along Washington Street. And this is a, really a focus on balancing open space with the idea of potentially a neighborhood center and integrating community amenities. And again, the connectivity to VC, connectivity to the Community Trail, an important aspect of that. And then thirdly, the, the gateway along Route 97. Again, a very important location that seemed like it was a good location for potentially mixed use and solving some housing needs and could be invigorated by creating new, new opportunities for connectivity to the, the Community Trail again. So those, you know, obviously the three main focal points, but they have been extrapolated to the rest of the town. You know, much of the rest of the town are established residential neighborhoods or open space, much of which is protected. And so Emily, I'm going to throw it back to you just to talk about implementation strategy and next steps.
Thank you, Michael. So Michael mentioned these planning elements, and they come out of Section 81D of Chapter 41 of the Mass General Laws. And that is the enabling legislation for doing comprehensive or master planning in Massachusetts. And so when you get to the implementation plan, and I'll explain what that is, and throughout the document, you see up at the top a series of icons. Those are the 81D elements that Michael mentioned. And in order to tailor this planning process to Groveland's needs, we did that clear focus on three areas that had the most opportunity and also the most questions about them. And then looking at the rest of the town and how it is already well-established as residential neighborhoods and conservation elements, so, or conservation areas. So taking the vision and taking the goals, the implementation plan is the actions necessary to get to that vision, to fulfill those goals. And so you have a list of actions there, a series of the partners, many of whom would be led by the Board of Selectmen and town staff, but with other partners in there. Some of the actions required, such as potential zoning changes, would require the assistance and the guidance of the Planning Board. And so the, the partners there are listed, and then the timeline. Is this a short-term item? Is it a medium or a long-term item? And then tying it back to 81D, which elements go with which actions. So they're grouped into the same goals that Michael mentioned. And then when we get to the key roles for next steps, this is where we start to see why it's important to have a plan. It's not just that there's enabling legislation. It is that planning for the future has real benefits to communities. So in the next steps, the Planning Board has the authority under the law to adopt the plan on behalf of the community. And so the next step would be the public hearing after, after the public comments come through. But once the plan is adopted, the Board of Selectmen has that key role in implementation. And the plan recommendations help provide, based on the vision developed through community input, to guide policies that the planning, that the Board of Selectmen may be considering, to help decide on investments. And those investments may be town funds, as we all know, municipal resources, municipal capacity only takes so far. So having guidance as to the direction of where the town could go is important for a Board of Selectmen to consider in its, in its own work. But also grant applications quite frequently ask whether or not a community has a comprehensive or a master plan. And so having that plan allows you to more fully support any grant applications that the community might go for. And then finally, in implementation, I mentioned the Planning Board. Working with the Board of Selectmen, working with town meeting, can bring forward zoning changes again as guided by the information from the comprehensive plans. So it's not, hopefully, a document that sits on a shelf, but is something that is very much usable by all members of the community to understand where the town's direction could be in the next 10 or so years. With that, though, even though we do have a draft plan, it is only a draft plan. And it's important both for the, the members of the two boards here and also the public to know that the plan is online. We are still very much looking for public input, so we've set up an easy way to provide that input. There's a little Survey Monkey questionnaire, it has minimal numbers of questions, but it gives an opportunity for members of the public to read the plan, review it, add those comments to that, that survey. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to take all of those comments, we're going to put them into an appendix. I was saying with Annie earlier, watch your spelling, because they're going to go into that appendix exactly as we receive them. And what that means is when the boards yourselves, the Conservation Commission, town staff, any of the Historical Commission, anybody else who has a role in implementation, is starting to think about the next steps and say, hey, you know what? We'd like to take on Action 1.3 or 2.5 or whatever it may be. What did people say about that in the final comments to the plan? Those comments will be available to all of you for your use as an appendix to the plan. So it's really important that we get that input from the public about their thoughts. And to that point, we will be at Groveland Day on September 9. We won't be at Hazardous Waste Day, although I admit that's a temptation. And that's so that anybody who's read the plan between now and September 9, if they have questions, we will be at the town booth and will be available to answer those questions. We'll have links to the survey there, so people can take the same survey. Very much looking for public comment. And we really appreciate your time tonight in letting us give you this quick review of the plan prior to that and letting us announce the public comment period.
Okay, I appreciate your comment tonight. It's quite a comprehensive plan. Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
This is my perspective and people I talk to, my opinion. I think most people in town would like to preserve the small-town character. Did your plan look at or study in any way the, the growth over the next 10 years and how that would be incorporated in your, in your vision? And, and do you have some numbers on that? Because if you had mixed-use residential units, it's, we just had a proper two-and-a-half override with our, with our school department, and there's a burden on the school system. And we need, we seem to need more businesses to help defray the costs and give some relief to our residential taxpayers. So was that part of your, your, your study, I guess?
That is an excellent question. And the premise you started out with, that people would like to, you know, that they value the small-town feel of Groveland, was certainly something that we heard. But you made an excellent point in terms of balancing growth from housing, commercial, keeping that balance. We didn't do population projections. And one of the interesting parts to this process was that the census data was delayed from the 2020 census through this process. So it made it a little bit difficult to do some of those demographic progression, projections that we might otherwise done. that we might otherwise done. We do have that data now. We did, however, look at an analysis of the tax rate and how thinking about commercial development in the town could affect the tax rate. That's in there. And if there's at some point you'd like to have a discussion of that, be more than happy to talk that through.
Okay. You have questions for Emily, Kathy?
Just still on the issue of the housing.
Yeah.
So I noticed that, you know, you remark about the change in the age demographic within the town. And you say that the different type of housing may be needed. Talking in terms of smaller-sized homes than what we currently are building. Right now, I think most of the building, at least that I've seen, is fairly large houses going for about a million dollars, from what I've been told. But we have an apartment building going in that I think most people, myself included, aren't too crazy about, a little worried about that. So like, to have something come in that comes out too fast for the town to absorb is a concern, financially speaking. We do have one over 55 condominium development. Are you thinking even smaller in size than those type of units? I mean, what exactly are you trying to point us in the direction of?
So you're bringing, it's an excellent question. You're bringing up an issue that has affected, I can't tell you how many communities in our area, which is, there is an aging population. There's also a population of young professionals, and there are, of course, families. And so if you think of that cycle of coming into independence, where you live at that point, where you live when you have a family of whatever size, where you live where you're an empty nester or aging, or that sort of overall life cycle, you need different housing types for different stages. And one of the things that we find, particularly in smaller communities, is you don't have that variety of housing types. You mentioned the over 55. There was a trend for doing age-restricted housing in many communities, but that doesn't address the younger side of the population. So what we meant by that was the idea of introducing different varieties of housing in different parts of Groveland. And that was one of the reasons for looking geographically as we did, is that some of your areas, Elm Street, Route 97, possibly 150 Center, Strawberry Fields, might be appropriate for one level of housing, but your neighborhoods are primarily built out of single-family neighborhoods. There might be a spot here or there, maybe it's a smaller scale. We talk a lot about, you mentioned the apartment housing. I think a lot of people have an image of these larger apartment buildings, but there's something called missing middle housing, which is planning jargon that we talk about a lot, that's sort of more to the four to eight, or eight to 12 units. They're not as large. And so the question becomes, which areas in Groveland is appropriate for which type of housing? What is that demand? If you're talking about some of that missing middle, you probably want it closer to commercial areas, so people can walk to them. If you're talking about neighborhood infill, maybe you're talking about a duplex, or, you know, up to a fourplex. But you're not talking about apartment houses next to single-family. It's just that's not the way this particular community's development pattern has already been. Anything you want to add to that?
Well.
Let me give you the mic.
I just, you know, the opportunity for people to age in place and be, stay in their community, I think, is really the critical thing. And when you're dealing with different-size units and targeting different demographics, whether it's the young professional or the empty nester, I mean, you're dealing with units that aren't going to put such a, necessarily a stress on the school system and other things like that. So, and it does, as you were saying, Emily, it doesn't have to be a large multifamily complex. There are many different typologies, from cottage-style housing to smaller, you know, multifamily units that can solve that. And I think the trick is, where do you, what's the best place in town to accommodate those things, so that you're still preserving the quality of the neighborhoods and whatnot?
And I think what we did was identify the areas, identify the possibilities, but you could see, we, one of the things we talked about are neighborhood plans, closer neighborhood plans that go more in-depth into the different types that might be appropriate for each area.
Yeah, I guess just a follow-up. I mean, recently I was reading, Boxford is doing an over 55, and they're going to cost just a million dollars each. To me, I mean, maybe that's downsizing in Boxford, I don't know. I think, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough thing, because we struggle with the services and the cost of services. And yet, we realize the reality of it, that, you know, my two sons grew up here, they can't afford a house in Groveland right now. No way. And I imagine on the other side of it, somebody who's in a home in Groveland could certainly right now sell it for a lot of money. Well, what are you going to buy in Groveland?
Right. And that, that point on affordability, you're absolutely correct, is there's kind of capital A affordability, there's a state designated affordability, but there's also what we call the small A affordability, and that's the cottage units, or it's the smaller units that we talked about, that are accessory apartments. There are different strategies for that, that, you know, are really community-dependent, and that's part. So we tried to call out the possibility of that, but that's an ongoing community conversation.
Do you have a couple of communities that you're aware of that did anything in this area?
Yeah, we could pull out more precedents, if that's, if that's something that you all would find helpful, we would be happy to.
Right, I'd like to see like a similar town, size-wise of ours, that decided to do something in this area. How did it go? What did they do?
Absolutely. We can pull those.
Thank you.
Ed?
Both of you mentioned several times about the neighborhoods, residential, but I haven't heard you talk too much about any industry, businesses. And are you going to look into, is our water system going to sustain these houses, the businesses, wherever you're going to put them? Expansion of the sewer system? And can you talk a little bit about maybe setting aside some places for light industry? You go downtown in Elm Park today, and you've got a strip mall with a couple of vacant storefronts down there. Are you going to look into, how do we fill those up? And take the, because everything that you're mentioning, residential, everything is going to add to our school, which is, becomes expensive. The taxpayers are taxed out. They need some, some sort of light industry, some businesses, to take the bite off of the residents.
Excellent point. Yes, the comprehensive plan looked at the three areas that Michael mentioned, Elm Square, Route 97, Strawberry Fields, and going, actually going from Valley Screw to VC Memorial, and has strategies within it for options for businesses. The level, so I often talk about the comprehensive plan as kind of being the 50,000-foot view. It's not going to answer every question and solve every problem, but it will give you direction. So in terms of figuring out exactly how much development, exactly how much sewer capacity or water capacity is needed, or whether that's going to be from onsite package treatment or other septic, it doesn't go to that level. But it does say, if you are considering adding this type of business, you should be looking at Elm Square, and these are the strategies. If you are considering adding light industrial, for example, or a denser level of, or more intense business, you should maybe be looking at Route 97, and this is, these are the strategies you'd look at. If you're looking at other sort of village-type strategies, you should be looking at Washington Street. If you're looking at something larger, and of course, there is actually a study of exactly the type I'm talking about at 150 Center right now. Anything to add to those? Okay. So, so, so yes, we've outlined the areas to look at and what to consider, but a comprehensive plan is never going to go down to the exact level that you're looking for in terms of precise numbers. That would be starting to go into a site feasibility plan, for example.
But, yeah, I will just add that, you know, there are strategies, specific strategies that we outline in each of those nodes, that make suggestions for, wow, boy, if you addressed the post office site or the gas station at Elm Square, you could create a whole nother experience there and connect Elm Square more visually and literally to the river, and that could make it more of a destination, and those types of things would then sponsor more opportunity for economic development there, or mixed use. And then, you know, so it's that piece of the equation. We've looked at some examples in each of those nodes, but we also are, well, the nodes are partly chosen based on where the available infrastructure is today as well, so.
Just, are you going to look at the, so are you going to look at the impact of what the residential or businesses have on the town?
We did do an analysis of tax impact that is in the plan, so I think I mentioned it earlier. I'd be happy to go over that with you more specifically.
I thought I heard you mention that.
Okay, yeah. Be happy to talk that through further.
You mentioned anything about setbacks?
Into the zoning. There's some recommendations for design guidelines and for zoning changes in there, so. And to your point on setbacks, that would depend on the area, right? So if you're in Elm Square, you're probably going to want to be closer to the street. If you're doing new development about Route 97, for example, you'd want to be further away, so that would go into the area. But I don't think we called out, we did not call out, this setback should be X and this should be Y.
I have a question. You mentioned the post office location and the gas station. I mean, it's private property currently, so what impact would this plan have on the rights of property owners? I mean, if they own the property and they want to develop the way they want to, will this burden them in any way, or frustrate them, or prevent them from the vision of the plan? Because maybe the gas station owner wants a gas station, and he doesn't want to connect it to the rail trail.
Right.
So how does this work in conjunction with American values and property rights?
It works beautifully with those. And it does that because this plan is not a document that forces any one path. What it does is it gives the town the opportunity to say, hey, we heard people would like this. You own property, that was talked about this, there's a vision in here. Would you like to talk to us about it? But it doesn't force that conversation. It doesn't require that they said, this is not a plan that has any sort of mandatory purchase by the town.
Regulatory effect.
Yeah, absolutely. It is, it sets the stage for a conversation.
So zoning, zoning laws stay the same until they change that?
Until they change. And then, as you know, the use is still allowed until there's a proposed change of use, so even a zoning change does not automatically change a use.
Because it could be grandfathered in.
Precisely.
You know? Legal nonconforming, possibly, so.
But it does for a property owner who maybe hasn't thought about the opportunities. This is another advantage of plans, like a comprehensive plan, is they can say, oh, I never thought that my business could, or my property could do X. Maybe I should talk to the town about this vision. Maybe I am interested, because I never thought about it before. But it doesn't force the issue.
Okay, appreciate the answer.
And I just was going to add, you know, like, the gas station site there, obviously, is a tremendous gateway location, you know, coming across the bridge from Haverhill. And, you know, so what the plan does is it also talks about the things that can be done that would further that type of initiative. In other words, there are conditions in Elm Square that are challenging the pedestrian environment compared to the power of vehicular presence. There's a perception about parking in Elm Square, and so the connectivity of those parcels that are just even across there, along the river's edge, and how that connects to the rest of Elm Square, those are really important pieces that we sort of touch on, so that you can have an understanding of how there could be another vision for that area.
Someone from the Planning Board?
I have a question, Dan.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just along the same lines. You have a really interesting table, where you tell us how many acres would be required, say, for office buildings to generate $1 million more in taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the analysis I was referring to.
Yeah, it's really kind of neat. Another section, you said we had about 332 acres of open land right now? Is that, that included in all this table analysis stuff?
That's a good question. I have to go back and check.
Okay, that's fine.
That might have been conservation. So I would want to double-check that, that particular.
It's easy for me to mix and match.
I know, right?
No, I'm not a town planner. But I do, I do like this. I thought it was interesting that for the same, to generate the same amount of tax revenue, you'd have to put 224 acres into manufacturing, as opposed to 50 acres for office space.
Based on current assessed values and tax rates. So one of the things that came up during this planning process was the conversations that the town was having about taxes, about municipal revenues, about the opportunities. And so I had been talking with other planning colleagues about some of the analysis that they were doing to help towns understand how different land uses had different opportunities for them. So that's where that came out of. Again, happy to go through that in more detail with you, but it is based on your current assessed values for different land uses, your current tax generation, revenue based on those land values. To Michael's point about what you can do for the different areas, there are ways that public investment, public infrastructure changes can help to increase value of commercial properties that then bring in more businesses, and that can sometimes change those dynamics. But it is a little bit harder than it might appear on the surface, and that's one of the things that we wanted to let you know, was what those, what the information basis was to help you make some more decisions.
Right. So in this master plan, you're going, you're presenting all of this information.
Right.
But you're not going to tell us what to do?
We have action steps that say, hey, you know, there's a vision that came out of the community discussions and input. There are these sort of goals that support the vision. And then to achieve those goals, there are a series of actions that you can take. There's nothing where we come in and say, and in 10 years, if you haven't done these, there's, you know, a big stick waiting for you. It's more that, in order to achieve what we've heard from the community, these are the things that you should consider. But as always, it is up to the elected officials of the town, the town itself, their partnerships with other people as to what actually gets done.
Right. I mean, this should give us a realistic expectation on the issue of commercial thing. To try and change us from 95.3% down to 90%, probably not realistic.
Probably not realistic, at least without significant other actions. Yes, that is correct.
Right, but some of these choices down here might be doable.
Exactly. And so the idea was, in those sections of the plan, to give you baseline data and information that would be useful in your discussions and making your further decisions.
I don't, I don't think I've ever, I ever saw this kind of information in our first master plan. That's why I'm so stuck on it. I really like it. I just, I won't belabor it, but thank you.
I'm glad you like it, yes.
I was just going to add that, and that, and the implementation charts are broken down into short-term, medium-term, and long-term, because in many instances, there's a sequential aspect to it. Like you have to do the zoning first before you can do this, and so there's, you know, you can look at it that way as well.
Lots of rules.
Do you guys also take into account that, like, the industrial zone and pots of grow in a priority habitat for endangered species and?
Yes, we do note that. And that, of course, reduces the amount of land you have available for development as that. And I should just stress that your priority habitat, your conservation land, huge resource to the town. So, you know, that is, that is, it's, it can be difficult when you're looking at the tax side of the town, but in terms of quality of life, in terms of having those natural resources, that is a fantastic thing for a town to have. But it does make some of the other land use choices a little bit tricky.
Challenging, yeah.
A little bit challenging, yes. If it were easy, you would not have to plan, right? So, but the planning hopefully gives you a basis for further.
But it can also be a benefit in terms of the interface between open space systems and economic development nodes. You know, like, if you were to create a parking area, for example, along, in a location along Route 97 near the Georgetown border, for another place to access Community Trail, that could create kind of a new node for some kind of development there, you know, related to the trail, et cetera. So. development there, you know, related to the trail, et cetera. So they are interconnected.
What would happen if we had no planning and just let the free marketplace, you know, rule the day? So I'll play devil's advocate with you here. What if, what if we do nothing? Why?
So that's a great question that you mentioned, the free marketplace. So as a business person, as an entrepreneur, you know, I have a business plan. So if you think of it in some ways, that it's not just a, you know, it's a, it's a plan for the town, but if you were, if you were a corporation, you would have a business plan that set out what you're doing over the next three months, six months, three years, five years. This happens to be, the life of a comprehensive plan is usually around 10 years, and it really is that same, same sort of thing. Government works at a different pace than business. It has a different role. It has a different set of responsibilities, but that idea of having only a certain amount of resources, I think of it, look, you've got an operating budget, you have a capital budget, you have staff, you have volunteers, both of which represent time resources, you know, you have a limited amount of infrastructure. It's what do you do with those resources? How do you think about the future of the town? So this plan gives you that vision. It starts to give you that, you know, short term, medium term, long term, over the next 10 years, and a guide to say, well, all other things being equal, if we have additional resources, maybe we should be putting them here and not here. If we want to apply for grants, we have a comprehensive plan. We can tell the state, look, a grant from the state is an investment in the community. So Massachusetts, we would like you to invest in our community. We have a plan to show you where that investment should go and why we think it's important. It's going to give you a competitive advantage over the other towns that don't have plans. So I think, again, it goes straight into your, your, your idea of the free market. It's still important to plan even in a free market, so I think it's a great question.
I think a lot of things are going to happen just on the, you know, developers kind of drive the train in many ways, and we haven't met our, I guess, state quota on affordable housing, so we're susceptible or vulnerable, depending on how your perspective on it, to 40Bs coming in town. Does your plan anticipate within the next 10 years that we will reach that, that threshold on the, on the affordable housing?
So no, because I think you dropped under the percentage right as, after the plan went to press, but what it does do is give you a way of talking to the developers and say, okay, you're coming into our, our community, you'd like to do a 40B. Here's the areas we would like to see a 40B. These are the housing types we're looking for. This is the type of, with 40B, you can, there are design guidelines at the state level that you can use with a 40B. You know, we see these design guidelines. This is, you know, it, it gives you the basis of saying, our community has a vision, and we'd like to make sure that anything happens in here works with this vision. So it's an important document for those reasons.
So along the guidelines of community standards, and that comes into play with the 40B planning phase, I believe?
If you look at the 40B, it's, it's, Michael mentioned the typology before, so it's looking at what else is in the community and how can that 40B respond to that. You can also set your own design standards or your own development standards. Many communities will put development standards into their zoning, and then they may have a separate design guidelines book that talks about architectural design or site design, landscape design in a community. So there are tools that this plan identifies that you can use for those conversations with developers. Doesn't mean that you're stopping anything, but you have a more productive conversation about what it should look like, about what it should feel like, about how it should work with the community.
I mean, these are very typical trade-offs, and if you're going to allow more density in a certain location, it should be packaged with all sorts of controls, both for site planning and for architectural design. I think that's a critical thing. And the other thing I was just going to add about the plan in general is, it really is a moment in time right now, and this plan really needs to be thought of as a living document, sort of over this next 10-year period, and it's really up to you guys as the leaders of the town to think about what pieces of the plan need to evolve and where the focus needs to be, which paths you want to choose to focus on, but they're all there, you know, suggestions. And obviously, nobody knew there was going to be a COVID-19, and there's climate change happening. There's so many things that could impact things on a, you know, a month-to-month basis, so it has to evolve.
What's the next step in the process? You're going to be at Groveland Day, and it's just information gathering and question and answers, and the board will read through it, and we're in?
Absolutely.
Read and review phase?
Mm-hmm, that's exactly where we are. Your comments are welcome. Planning Board's comments, obviously welcome. Public's comments are welcome. We will be at Groveland Day, so happy to talk in depth with people. It looks like I should probably bring a copy of the plan with me, too. We'll gather all the comments. So the public comment period ends September 15th, then we put them all into the appendix. We'll be scheduling a meeting with the planning board for your public hearing. I think we're doing it as a public hearing. The planning board would then hold that public hearing, and if they're satisfied, vote to adopt it. And then that whole process and how long they take, obviously, is up to them. And then, you know, if you, if you've had comments that require that we tweak some parts, you know, from the boards, then we would tweak those before it's the final vote. If it's the public comments, again, we're just going to put in the appendix exactly as we get them so that you have those and they're useful to you as you move forward. And so I think we're looking to be wrapped up with the process, say, end of October, is about right, and then it's implementation.
And if anyone in the public or anyone in town government needs to contact you, how would they do so?
Speak to Annie. She'll get, she'll get in touch with me.
Our town planner?
Yep, absolutely. Annie, the town planner. And again, if there's something more specific that you need me to go through or Michael to go through, we can figure out a time to do that, so.
Okay, anyone else on the planning board?
Good right now.
Y'all set? Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having us. We appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the planning board like to stick around?
The planning board is good. Thank you.
You're good? You're good? You're going to stay for the rest of the meeting?
You can.
You're welcome to.
I think we ordered pizza.
We ordered a pizza? I want some coffee.
No, we didn't.
All right, we'll continue on. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have a approval of the minutes. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, July 17, 2023. Is there a motion? Has everyone read those?
Yeah, they look to be in order. I move for passage.
Move for passage. A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Look good, Mark?
I was just going to make sure I was there.
Yeah.
I missed one meeting.
Yep, you were there.
I want to vote on it if I was.
Mark, you were there.
I don't know if I'm here half the time either.
You were present.
Thank you, guys.
All those in favor. Thank you, Brad. All those in favor. Four in favor, one absent.
Ed, hand up.
Yeah, I do. I already voted.
Next up, appointment of the, appointments of the board. We have appointment of David Greenbaum, Chair of the Board of Health, to Trash and Recycling Committee effective August 28, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, sorry, I have an update. At the time of the posting of the agenda, we had assumed that it would be the Board of Health Chair. At their meeting this past Thursday, the Board of Health had recommended that the appointment go to Jim Stapenian, another board member, to be representative of the Board of Health, so I would like to update the appointment of David Greenbaum to the appointment of Jim Stapenian.
Can we do that without it posting, or should we put it off till next meeting? Is that going to be an open meeting issue, where he didn't post his name?
We can put it off to the next meeting for just to be.
I don't think they're on the side of caution unless somebody knows the absolute rule on that.
Well, I mean, I spoke to the Chairman of the Board of Health, and he said they would vote on the 24th, so I should have just put Board of Health member, but this is a Board of Health member.
Yeah, but we didn't. We specifically said David Greenbaum, and we're swapping out, so if somebody wanted, somebody wanted to chime in on Jim, I think they might have a valid.
That's fine. We can put it on the next agenda.
Fine.
Well, you know.
Rebecca wants you to re-
Motion to table, table that appointment.
I'll second that. All those in favor are tabling. Thank you. Just want to be right. There's people out there watching me. Next up, appointment of Bill O'Neill, Finance Board, to the Trash and Recycling Committee effective August 28, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill O'Neill to the Trash and Recycling Committee.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor. Four in favor, one absent. Welcome, Bill. Number 10, appointment of Stephanie Bartlett, resident, this is a resident, to the Trash and Recycling Committee effective August 28, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Is there a motion to appoint Stephanie Bartlett?
I'll make a motion to appoint Stephanie Bartlett to the Trash and Recycling Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? God bless her. Trash and Recycling Committee. Sounds so exciting. Sounds so exciting.
It's the best committee.
You're going to ask for a vote?
All those in favor, sorry. That was my discussion.
Oh, okay. Nice try.
Kathy, hand, hand up was a hint. Come on.
Yeah, you just didn't, you like.
Four in favor, one absent. Number 11, appointment of Jan Dempsey.
Make a motion to appoint.
I didn't finish reading it. Come on.
Maybe I hesitated. I don't know.
Resident. That's the label on here is resident, so anyone knows, resident. To the Trash and Recycling Committee effective August 28, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Is there a motion, Mark?
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
All right. I'll make a motion to appoint Jan Dempsey to the Trash and Recycling Committee.
I'll second it.
Ed seconded. And any discussion, Kathy? Mark? Ed? All those in favor?
Yep.
Passes. Four in favor, one absent. Next up, Town Administrator time. Rebecca Oldham, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of items. Just one to identify that we, as all of you know, had a huge rain event that occurred this past week. It created a lot of flooding issues, and in response to such, we've created a task force to help identify our problem areas and also identify areas of future concern, specifically in the case of hazard mitigation and future flooding. So that task force consists of myself, the Building Commissioner, and Flood Plane Administrator Sam Joslin, the Town Planner Annie Schindler, as well as the Highway Superintendent Rennie Carroll. So we will be taking a closer look at aerial imagery and identifying those specific locations and coming up with a plan of action moving forward. Also, in relation to the rain event, the Uptec culvert was set for completion for September 6. Unfortunately, due to the rain event and the flow of water, that date had been pushed back. We believe that the date will now be September 8. We are working with the contractor right now to identify whether or not this will have any potential impact on the school buses and the school year. We believe that we will be able to allow buses to utilize the roadway and not necessarily open the roadway for continued traffic and have the contractors stall work during those crucial transportation times, but we are working to identify exactly how we will move forward with that, and we'll be making appropriate announcements once we have that information available. And then I also wanted to let the board know that the monthly newsletter that I've been working on is just about complete, so the first newsletter will be released this week. I hope to be issuing them monthly at the end of the month, so stay tuned. And then also to remind everyone that Groveland Day is going to be September 9, here down at the Pines, from 10 till 4, as well as on September 8, there will be the Groveland Day 5K event that starts at 2:30 PM, and you can find more information on the website and social media, and we're really excited about this year's event.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What about money we spent? Don't you usually tell us that? Well, that was the last meeting.
The warrants?
Yes.
I do not have the warrant information. I have not had a chance to review them.
Okay, next time.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Anyone want to ask that Town Administrator anything?
No.
No? Mark?
I'm good.
Kathy?
No, I still want to see the, the dam. Where would I park to go look at?
So the Salem Street Dam is located right next to the intersection at Washington and Salem, right by the car auto, I think it's Price Road is.
It's over there?
So you would turn down that intersection, and it's right over there, on Salem Street.
On Salem Street, on the same side as Price Road?
Yes.
And?
On like, so if you're coming up to the intersection, you'll take a right, a left, excuse me, and it's right there, at the blinking lights.
Okay, so it's like, the dam, the panels are in front of the road, so they go under the road. The water goes under the road? I'm just wondering where this dam is.
So it's a, it's a, it's a roadway. It's a culvert, essentially.
It's just a road with a culvert.
It's the road.
It's an elevated road, and it's got a big, like, pipe running through the middle.
Mark, stop laughing at me.
It's like a.
All right, I'll go look. I'm just, I'm trying to understand this idea that we have this big dam that's going to let.
It's not, it's not the Hoover Dam or anything, okay? It's not like that.
That's going to let loose on us, wash us all out.
No, it's like a road with a, with a hole in it, and it leaks.
It's more so a culvert.
Oh, where the ditch is, huh?
It's like a ditch. I mean, I looked at the picture of it. It's got a big, like, looks like a drainage pipe.
All right, I'll, I'll stop the comic relief mode for Mark, and I'll just fill the.
I was kidding with Rebecca that we should get one of those big pumps and fill it with, like, Play-Doh or Silly Putty and just fill it. Shouldn't cost a half a million bucks, you know?
So that's essentially the, the planned fix, is to fill in the, the area of the, the dam that has voids within it, and also to slip line the pipe and make sure that the water is able to pass through accordingly. At the next meeting, if you'd like, I can provide a memo with some more detailed information as to what we've been doing and the work we've been doing, and also have the Highway Commissioner Superintendent present to provide some input in terms of the more technical details, if that would please the board.
Oh, I'd be astounded.
Mark, Mark would like it.
Would you be pleased?
Yeah, I would like to know, because we took away the plate that was at the mill pond, so we don't shut the water there, but we still control it up at the pond, I assume.
So you're talking about the stop logs?
I don't know what I'm talking about most days.
We'll, we'll put it on the next agenda.
This whole thing seems to cost a million dollars no matter where we look at it, so I'd like to understand it a little better.
I understand, but we, we can't deliberate. We'll have to add it to the next agenda, and then we can discuss it and post it and deliberate properly.
But just understand it. I just like to understand what.
But I can't talk too much about, you know, my Silly Putty idea, because it could be an open meeting law violation.
Put it on the next agenda. It's fine.
We will add it to the next agenda, folks, and we will discuss it at length.
Thank you.
I was going to say add something, but I refrain.
Don't.
Rebecca, are you all set?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Selectman time. I always pick Kathy first.
It's always Kathy.
Ladies before gentlemen, I'm old school.
I'm old school. Just went back to school today, so I guess we're kicking off that school year already. Groveland Day's coming up. I'm going to miss it this year. I'm really bummed out about that, but can't be helped. I still would like to look forward to seeing some type of goals for the Select Board this year so that it kind of know, like, where we're heading. Personally, I'd like to see the road plans for the next five years to see what roads we're going to be fixing, and I'd like us to have some type of a steering as to, other than just the budget, you know, are we going to try to resolve any other problems this year? That's all.
All right. After Rebecca, and we'll add what we can to the agenda. I mean, you want to spearhead some of them.
I'm already spearheading two of them.
We're going to add them to the agenda so that we can talk.
Uh-huh, sure. Let's do that.
All right.
Yep.
Our meetings are shrinking in time, you know? We, we need to add more things. Mr. Watson, do you have anything?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Mark Branto?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
I don't have anything, because I make the agenda, and if I wanted it on there, I guess I put it on there, so, what else do we have? We have, I think I skipped over, we have correspondence, if anyone wants to read it, and older or unfinished business. Anybody have any older unfinished business? And then we have the other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting, so that anything happened between the time of posting and today? Not that we're aware of.
It rained.
Well, what's next? Before I make a motion to adjourn, thank the planning board for attending. Appreciate your time and effort.
Very well. Thank you.
You know, taking time out of your busy lives.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Also thanks to our Town Planner, Annie. She's not in the room right now.
Absolutely.
She did a really phenomenal job getting the. She did a really phenomenal job getting this master plan coordinated amongst all the other things she's doing.
Things are moving smoothly. I hope everyone's enjoying their summer. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Is there a discussion on a motion to adjourn? Someone said we can't discuss journeying, but I'm not really.
Yes, you can.